The second one there. But still building.
This is the wall or?
Yeah.
It's pretty bizarre. Maybe it's worth it. Morning.
Good morning.
So if you don't like that, uh, that policy that we have, put it on the agenda and that one was all the way back to two thousand.
That's true.
Put it elsewhere. Anything you want out there, put it on there.
That's, that's the policy.
Yeah, it is.
She's gonna have your list next month. It'll take two hours to do the meetings next month.
It's okay. I'm getting our personnel policy. We went over a year and a half. Was that you that got stuck in an elevator in a central building?
My wife.
Yeah, she had a little trip.
Well, see, what I saw were they subpoenaed him in the, or just, uh, certain way.
We're different. Just with the body. Nothing bad, but it just. That's the best that we weren't raised to call. Exactly. She did do it. Reminding that we've been saving that money and now here, here we are. We've got enough that we can go.
Hello, Susan.
Morning. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. How are y'all?
We're good.
And speaking of while.
Been busy, huh?
Austin both times.
How was Chalmers County today?
Uh, it was good. It's Chalmers County almost complete until the hour.
We're good.
Well over half. So they had, um, the difference was they had it at a venue in which they brought food and we had bring food in. They appeared, so it kind of took a load off the county officials and all that, you know?
Yeah, they put a big production last year.
Yeah, but you know, everybody has food, but it was, you know, nothing better than home.
Well, you get it.
They did a nice job at the, at the Bobblehead Museum.
Right.
So it's a really nice place and so plenty of space. Last time it was really crowded in that little place. Wherever it was two years ago, when people were just jam packed and just kind of spread out and easy to get to and market and it was nice. But it was, the faculty members, you know, schools were there, um, kids were there.
Very good. All right, we call meeting to order. Uh, first thing we're going to do is invocation, please.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into the temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and power and glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and endless.
I don't have anyone signed up for public comment. We're gonna skip ahead today. Amos has got some stuff he needs to do, so we're gonna let him give us a drainage report this time.
We want to start out with the CL, the CLC and the, the side pipe project. We were able to get the pipes set in a couple of weeks ago. We released water and we unfortunately discovered we had a leak. We're currently fixing that leak right now today, and that's why I'm trying to get out of here, uh, get the pipe patched, get sealed up and get it covered up. We hope to be releasing water tomorrow and back in order. So that is, that is the plan without it, which is unfortunate to hit the head and you know how to come and fix it. The jobs that we're still on hold, the same, same jobs, cleaning crooked bottle, the, the onion bottle tributaries, dust, it's been top stuff. All again, as soon as we get down with CLC, the all these machines will get dispersed back where they go and we can get back on those other tasks. El, El Baller shed, uh, that big peat on unit, uh, is pushing down. We finally got some good weather and we're making some ground and, uh, guys, guys are doing a great job of cleaning, getting those ditches cleaned up again. Finally starting to dry out, so, uh, we, it was not rough there for a few weeks. Same thing with, uh, with brush ditch, so this, this is finished cleaning brush ditch, okay, from, uh, from up there, I mean, almost from sixteen, sixty-three all the way through, right up and up and down, uh, and now we're having to do some fence work. So that's what they're concentrating on now. Matter of fact, I think they finished that up yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, able to complete the jobs, will be tidying up a couple of things and then moving on to the next project for that, for that machine. Got some pictures of the fence work you guys have been working on last couple of weeks. Uh, East Bay Tributary, uh, this is your Komonti grinder, one of the newer machines. He's, uh, that was part of an old dilapidated bridge that was in there. Uh, the gentleman's done a, done a great job. I think that's the old bridge there on the right, you can kind of see. This is part of trying to get away some old drainage, you know, drainage hangups there. Those things, whole debris and stuff, so. I want to touch base on the BD six project too, uh, toward the end of my report. So Jerry and I, Jerry has spoke with our engineers. As far as our permit goes, uh, we have like the nationwide three flanking permit, which will allow us to actually put fill back in as long as we stay within the norm of the original, go back to the original. We can't access fill or anything, we have to go back to the original. So that's, that's where we're at on that. We don't have to take the permit, we can fill that and put it back like it was. I did want to touch base too, uh, just a note, we had talked about annodes on our saltwater structure, we had seven of them. We have done the three, we did them, uh, last, last budget session. Uh, we had the four lined up, I'm trying to get those done at the end of this month or the beginning of April. Like I said, the weather's finally getting right, I can get to, uh, those. I was actually at Fitzgerald's and seen the two gates, uh, that we need to last week. So, uh, that ought to, hopefully I can report on that. I just want to let y'all know we are looking at that and those were twenty-five or twenty-seven thousand dollar piece, so there will be about a hundred thousand dollars coming out for that. If you guys have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Good?
Thank you.
Looks great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we're gonna go to item four, approve the minutes of regular meeting held February twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
He was the classic good neighbor. Whenever we had a water situation, he drove by on his way home and stopped to help the neighbor in the rain and the colds and everything else. So who knows to, not only being a good neighbor, but.
Very good. Good, good job. Good job, Amos.
Bye, y'all.
Thank you. All right, item four, approve the minutes for regular meeting held February twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
I read the minutes yesterday and I make motion to accept the minutes from, from the, uh, regular meeting on February twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Have a motion of second all in favor? Motion carries. Item five, approve financial report for February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, the general fund revenues received was one million, six hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Our expenditures were three hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-four cents. We're forty-one point six percent into the fiscal year and we've expended twenty-eight point six-four percent of the budget. Uh, fund balances for February for all accounts, we have nine million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents. Water, uh, we received six hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Our expenditures were five hundred and eighty-one thousand and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents. We're forty-one point six-seven percent into the fiscal year and we've expended thirty-five point eighty-five percent of our budget. Uh, fund balances again for all accounts was nine million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and thirteen, uh, dollars and eighty-one cents.
Make a motion to approve the financial report for February twenty-eighth, is ready?
Second.
Have a motion and a second all in favor? Motion carries. Item six, approve the tax report for February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, February twenty twenty-five collections were one million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and one dollars and seventy cents at a collection rate of eighty-five point five one percent. Uh, February last year at this time, we received one million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and five cents with a collection rate of ninety-one point eight oh. Jefferson County, we received nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents with a collection rate of seventy-two point two-two percent. February collections of last year, we received eight thousand, nine dollars and sixty-six cents with a collection rate of seventy-one point two eight.
Make a motion to approve tax report, is ready?
Second. Motion of second all in favor? Motion carries. Item seven, review and consider approval of council panel.
The February twenty twenty-five accounts receivable was three thousand, seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Unpaid accounts were one hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents. Accounts payable was three hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. The utility construction fund, we took a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars out of it to pay for the five hundred meters that we purchased.
Make a motion to review, uh, to approve council panel?
Second. Motion of second all in favor? Motion carries. Item A, consider possible action granting access to Lee Blue's property by allowing him to move the entrance gate at Handcover Sewer Plant Road easement.
Yes, sir. Uh, uh, here's a picture of it and he owns a piece behind these houses here that face Spikes Road. And so in other words, his, his land is pretty well cut off. He's proposing to move the gate, uh, to the end of his property. That way they can use, according to Bobby Hall, that is a public road easement that has never been approved. Uh, whenever you, uh, for the county to take it over for maintenance, you have to bring it to their standard, otherwise it's just a public road dirt. So he can't get this property cut off. My concern with this is, is our sewer plant is another eight hundred feet south of this and we've already had, uh, in the past, we've had noise complaints from the blowers and it's also a sewer plant that's, uh, air activated and all the smells going up into the air. So I have a concern and I explained to him that about if they go and build houses in here, now they're closer to the plant than they were. So I talked to Kate about if, were there any way that if, if we did allow this, uh, and I'm not saying he's building houses, he's just wanting to sell it. So, uh, if we could not put some kind of restriction. This bottom line, at, at the bottom is, is where our property stops and that's a five-hundred foot buffer that has to be in there for the, the sewer wetlands. So we have a five-hundred foot, foot buffer in there already, so where you can't build anything or anything like that. So I, I explained to him that that was our main concern was that the closer you put houses to the plant, the more they're gonna complain about either smell or noise from the blowers or, and stuff like that. So that's happened. He's not actually laying one, because he's got property touching it already. Yes, he does, on the other side. See there next to the bayou?
Yeah.
He owns, he's not actually laying it right there, so they can't get in from, from there. But.
So how far does, I wonder, does that, uh, county road go?
Uh, I.
Does it go, goes in, into our property? Okay.
No, but nobody can really tell me. Bobby Hall looked at this ground over at the county, looked at the forest and it's six one half of another.
So we'll need to rip the fence that.
Uh, actually, he, he was going to pay to move the gate forward and pay for the fencing.
Pay for it, okay.
Yeah, and pay for it all. But again, that's, that's my main concern is if they go and clear this property off and start building houses in there, that they come back to us and say, hey, look, these blowers are whining at night and I can't sleep. The lady on the corner already, uh, I've already been to one, um, uh, meeting with the public over there about that and we did some adjustment on the blowers, put solators on to quieten it down and I haven't had any more complaints, but she was complaining that her dog was barking all night and that it's loud and, uh, one of our ex-employees lives there and he said, well, it's quiet, it's no different. You can hear I-ten, but you can also hear the, the door running at the sewer plant. Uh, at one time they contacted me about buying this piece of property and, uh, I just, we already have almost three hundred acres in there, so the only other thing we could do is we were interested in buying it to keep the buffer.
We've already got a buffer.
We have a five-hundred foot buffer right now.
And that's, that's what we're required to have.
That's what we're required to have.
And I, I mean, I don't see how we can stop him from doing that since we.
And I talked to Kate about this, is, is that we notified him that somehow or have something in there that says, hey, look, you know you're building close to the sewer plant.
Exactly.
And you're gonna have noise and you're gonna have smell.
But as far as him accessing, uh, his property on that road, I, I, I don't know that we have a choice.
It's a public road.
Exactly.
Well, it's public, yeah, so it's just. And from everything, and Bobby even went to the courthouse and pulled out some of the original drawings and everything. But just want to let you, this is, uh, just let the board know.
I'd like to see what we write up to, if we're giving access, I'd like to see what, you know, like I said, yeah, hey, there's sewer plants here, it's not moving.
I don't, I can't, it buffer wise, through regulations and everything else, calling the Loretta, uh, there's nothing.
Right.
He's, there's nothing I can do to stop him, because we have our five-hundred foot buffer.
Yeah. I'd like to see that before we.
Okay, I'll, whenever Kate gets back off of vacation, I'll get with her and see what kind of language we can put in there to, to say, hey, look, you're, you're aware of where you're building.
Can we tag you that till next month?
Okay. We'll table item eight and make sure we have it on next month's agenda.
Does it make a motion to do that?
Do we do?
Uh, uh, I have a motion of second all in favor? Motion carries. Item eight's tabled. Item number nine, consider impossible action selling bonds to secure funding for the twenty-inch water line. Do we need to do all these separate or can we?
Uh, it's all really one.
Exactly.
I don't see a problem with, with putting them all together.
You want me, you want me to read all of them?
No, I'll be glad and explain.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so we, the twenty-inch water line and we're leaving the water plant in Winnie and we're running across I-ten because of, uh, Victor said that she put it in the paper that we were going north, we're actually going south. We need to cross I-ten because we only have one eight-inch crossing, so we can't get enough water to the south side and this is where the growth is. Uh, we've had a couple of capacity studies done and for a truck stop and RV park and stuff down on Highway seventy-three, we do not have enough water concerned. So this is where, so we're putting together a package and went out for bid and, uh, East Tech Utilities was low bidder at five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. So what I, I propose to do is take this, uh, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, uh, and sell bonds. Uh, also, we need to, uh, complete our water meter change out, so we have twenty-seven thousand water meters left and with the price that we're paying for the, the meters and paying a contractor sixty dollars to install them, that way he says he can put in a thousand, huh?
Five hundred a week.
Five hundred a week. So, I mean, let's do it, get it over with. Uh, so that's eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to, to finish the meter change out, all electronic read. Uh, also the water ground storage tank at the Anawak Water Plant, uh, the engineer's projection is it's gonna cost a million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for this tank.
That's, that's been on our bill for a while.
Yes, it has and the, the plans were ninety percent, so they're right at a hundred percent, so it's ready to go out for bid. Uh, uh, well, it's actually ready to go to the TCQ for their approval to, to build the thing. Then we'll have to review the plants and everything and do it. And they will also have to review selling of bonds, so it's gonna be somewhere around three million dollars to, to sell bonds for fifteen years, uh, and pay for all three of these projects. And so this is what I'm asking the board to do is to, uh, say the, the twenty-inch water line's already been bid, so it's ready to go. So what we can do is we, part of the, uh, selling of bonds, we can do our, our reimbursement agreement to where we can go ahead and start that job with our own money and get it started, but whenever the bond's actually funded, they'll reimburse us our money. I'm just trying to, uh, pay for the, the ground storage tank for itself, but according to our targets, we can only borrow money for three years. So that means that I would, it would cost me six hundred thousand dollars a year just to do the, the water tank. So, and I just don't have that kind of money. I would be totally strapped to where I couldn't do anything but survive. So I think this is the best thing for us is to go ahead, put all three of these together and sell bonds. They're about a hundred and fifty days out for, to, to build the tank. Uh, we would also have to go to an engineering, uh, LJA and, and let them put a package together to go to the TCQ because they have to review all of this stuff to be able to sell bonds. Uh, our financial, US Capital Advisors, uh, James Gillis, uh, he wasn't able to make this meeting, I was gonna ask him to come, but he put a, put together a scenario for ten years and, uh, I think our best bet is the fifteen year, okay? Uh, so right now, we're paying nine hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars a year for our bonds that we have. We have a two thousand and twelve series that paid for both water plants and the sewer plants. At that time, they borrowed twelve million dollars, I believe it was, and in two thousand, in two thousand and two. And whenever I came in two thousand and eleven, the interest rate on it was like six percent. And so I refinanced up like a two percent, so it saved us millions of dollars and dropped it from a one point two million dollar a year note to a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar a year note. Plus we sold two million dollars worth of bonds to build this building, so that's a hundred and eighty, so our note right now is nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. Uh, next year, two thousand and twenty-six, the, 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 uh, two thousand and twelve revenue bonds are paid off, so that means that seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars is gonna drop off. So there, uh, the plants are completely paid for.
Move, move to the next one, this is a ten year.
Uh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought I was on a fifty.
There we go.
Okay. I thought I must have rolled or something.
Well, you, you were getting my math messed up.
Okay. Right now, we're still at nine seventy and next year it drops off to, we will be paying three hundred and seven. All we have left is the, the two thousand and fourteen and those will be paid off in two thousand and thirty-four.
So we've already got money allocated basically for the bonds that were paid down. So what we're basically adding is about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year.
Exactly.
It is what we're, it's what we're looking at.
So we're going from nine fifty to six hundred and twenty-eight ninety. So we're actually picking up there at three hundred thousand dollars a year and we've changed all our meters out and built the water tank we've had too, and we've increased our, our production to where we can, uh, we can add this growth.
So it's basically gonna cost us twenty-seven thousand dollars per month to do this for the next fifteen years and we will take that money out of the eighty thousand dollars a month increase that we had a year and a half ago. We've been putting eighty thousand a month aside to do projects like this. And so basically what, what we're saying is we're gonna spend the twenty-seven thousand a month of the eighty, we're gonna finance these projects and it'll leave us fifty-three thousand a month to, to continue doing other projects.
But when these others drop off, uh, next year.
Right, that, that, that'll help as well.
Yeah, drop it way down.
Right, that, that's gonna help as well, but e, but even if they didn't, we'd still be okay.
Yes, we would be, we would still, we have the revenue and we have to have one point two five percent into, in the bank for these bonds, so we have to have a hundred and twenty-five percent, uh, to pay the note for one year and then we put in monthly to pay the note.
Right.
So we'll, we're gonna have to have four hundred thousand dollars or so to, to do this.
That would come out of that construction fund that we have right now, that we have roughly eight hundred thousand dollars in it, so.
You don't know exactly when the other one comes off.
I want to say it's the middle of next, you came to the office the other day and we were talking about it and I started looking it up and I, I got busy. It seems like it's about the middle of next year.
So you have about a year to work.
Yeah, maybe about.
Before you have that money back.
So this is, uh, in a, this is pretty normal, you know, once you finish one set of bonds and you move on, and this time you do another large project and you sell bonds again.
So these projects are, have been kind of sitting on the books for a little while, but need to be done.
And part of this is that we met with the city of Anawak last week and I talked with them and then there were, uh, we have a, a subdivision coming in at Fort One, it's sixty-five and sixty-one, it'll be three hundred and something houses. And it's just about finished, which means that there's a six-inch force main going from there into the Anawak sewer plant. And then Anawak has one on the south side, close to Poskey, inside the city limits, that there's another guy that wants to do three hundred thousand there. So their concern is that doing a capacity study, they've never had one done before, so. So their concern is that doing a capacity study, they've never had one done before, so. Uh, they did a capacity study and the sewer plant that they have and the sewer plant that we have combined will not carry both of those subdivisions. So I met with them last week and explained to them that, you know, since I've been here in ten years, they've built five houses in Anawak. You know, their water rates are so high and taxes and everything else, so it, it's not like they're gonna build overnight. So I think, uh, talking with them, uh, we've got them, them, the engineers, that they're gonna do like a phase one of these, these deals, just like they did at Cypress Point up there. They're gonna do a phase one that's making ninety houses. And when that's built out, they'll do phase two and so on and so forth. So somewhere down the line, we're gonna have to build a new sewer plant.
Did you, did you notice in the, what I read that, of that report from LJA, that their sewer plant is upgradable to like a point nine or something like that?
And they are, but still, even though with them doing the paperwork with point nine and ours also, well, ours, point nine is with ours. So they can go up to a point, they're point five, they're going to point seven and with our, our, uh, tube is point nine.
I guess.
So that's with our plant included and that's the reason why I made it in. That way I understood the whole picture. So the point nine is with ours and it will be too much with, if you built out both those subdivisions. Uh, I don't see it happening. Now, maybe if it was on I ten up by Cypress Point possibly, but that far off Interstate ten and plus, I, I don't, just don't think that the growth is gonna be that fast.
It'll be a while.
Yeah, uh, we've probably got a hundred and fifty, two hundred houses in Cypress Point and it started at a thousand. And that they, they're able to build a thousand in there and we're at two hundred in five years. So that's not to say the pace might pick up. And if that's the case, then we will have to build a sewer plant at some point, at some time. But still, with those bonds dropping off and everything else, we'll still be in a pretty good position to be able to build a larger plant there in the future. So I believe, uh, I'm going to their next board meeting and I believe, uh, I have them and I've met with the mayor and them and I think we're understanding that the recommendation is let them go ahead and build phase one. And for some reason that they didn't build that fast, I have a three inch that comes up, uh, highway sixty-one that I, that I could have, have them bring it down another way. So if needed, so we have several options and so we've got a, Victor and I had lunch with them and laid our cards on the table. This is what all we have, what we're looking at. And if the growth's that quick, you know, it's to our advantage to build a plant. So anyway, so we, uh, so that's where we're kinda at on all of this. I just do not have the money, uh, you would have to raise the rates again to be able to cover all this kind of money and we can only borrow for three years.
Right, and as far as the sewer plant, the, a new sewer plant goes, would the study, the study that we're having done right now should tell us if we're, where we would need that?
Yes.
And, and that should be completed within the next month or so?
Yes, sir, that, the, the, the study for that side, what we need, it should be done.
Okay, good, so, so we, we can consider all that at that point?
And, uh, but I just don't see the growth that fast in that area. So, and like I said, we have a, I started, I thought it was a six inch, uh, leaving like Bailey Road, which is way over the front and, uh, and, uh, the plan was to run a six inch all the way out to Bailey Road. And we did have to include some of our money to pay for it. And, but evidently they decided they didn't want to pay any more money and dropped it to a three, but that was important. So anyway, so that's kinda where we're at and, uh, so large projects like these, then, uh, they're just capital improvement and this is the best way to pay for them. And the interest rate is three point nine to four percent right now.
So I'm gonna, uh, combine nine, ten and eleven and it's considered possible action selling bonds to secure funding for the twenty inch water line, also for the twenty-seven hundred water meters and also for the ground storage tank, uh, which will be a total of three million dollars.
Roughly, uh, it, it could be, uh, the water line is bid, so we know what it is and, uh, the water meters are pretty, pretty set, but, uh, the water tank is not, that's the engineer's estimate, so. But it's, it'll go out.
It'll go out in August, I think.
I think she guys said a hundred and fifty days is kinda where we're at to where she's ready to go out for bid.
Okay, there we go.
But all of that also has to go through the TCQ. Uh, uh, whenever you do stuff like this, it's a, it's a ton of paperwork. By the time everybody touches it and regulatory agencies and everything else, so it's a, it's a pretty good job to sell bonds. And, uh, so I'll, we'll have to provide all kind of, the last time whenever we built this building, I had to provide information even on the drainage side. Not only what kind of shade the plants were in and everything else, because they wanna make sure that you're not building the new building versus then you really need a water plant. So they're gonna look at all of that, so it's gonna take some time. Uh, you'll be hearing about this a lot for a while till we, we get it all together.
Hopefully this new administration, you know, with a lot of those requirements, we won't have that.
I hope so, uh, you know, they, uh, the old, the lacking project was brick lining the, 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 over here. And we went back, they came back and wanted to do a full water permit. And so there were, I was telling Victor, there was some movement on it last week where they, uh, Horizon is our environmental company through LJA and I had to sign off to, uh, to do an archeology study and make sure there's no Indian bones and anything in there and all that other kind of stuff. And the guy emailed me back and he said, I got a permit in one day. He said, I have never seen this in my life, so he got a permit in one day. So hopefully they're picking it up.
All right, so I'll make a motion to sell bonds or look in selling bonds to secure funding for the twentieth water line project, twenty-seven hundred water meters and the west grounds water storage tank project.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
The three motions carry. Item twelve, consider impossible action on resolution twenty-five oh three approving application to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for district projects and issuance of utility system revenue bonds.
Yes, sir, this is just, uh, uh, the board has to, uh, actually do a resolution to, to go out and, and to send all this, uh, this is all taken from, uh, I took this out of two thousand and fourteen whenever we sold these off of our, uh, agenda and everything in there, so I pretty much just made it fit this project, so.
Make a motion wins out resolution twenty-five oh three approve an application to TCQ, uh, for district projects issuance of utility system revenue bonds.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries. Item thirteen, consider impossible action to engage Governor P L L C as bond counsel for utility system revenue bond series twenty-twenty-five.
Standard water plate.
Huh?
Standard water plate is, they're the ones that putting it together themselves.
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion to James Germer, P L L C as bond counsel for utility system revenue bond series twenty-twenty-five.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries. Item fourteen, consideration of possible action to adopt resolution twenty-five oh four authorizing US Capital Advisors LLC to prepare the notice of sale for the bonds, prepare the issue, the, prepare and issue the preliminary official statement for the bonds and authorize the distribution thereof and authorize publication of notice of sale for the bonds.
So US Capital will be actually the ones that sell it. Sell the bonds, far as, uh, and they'll look at it, uh, they'll look a couple of ways. Uh, the Water Development Board, they loan money and sometimes they have a very good rate. Whenever we built the building, we had a triple A, uh, rating as far as our bonds went. So we actually went to the public and sold the bonds and actually got a better rate. So it's gonna just, he's gonna find us a better rate for us to go through, through the Texas Water Development Board or sell that right outright.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five oh four authorize US Capital Advisors LLC to prepare the notice of sale for the bonds, prepare and issue the preliminary official statement for the bonds and authorize the distribution thereof and authorize publication of notice of sale for the bonds.
Second. Motion of second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries. All right, we've already done Amos's report, Water and Sewer Report.
Um, I can, the same thing I wanna tell Victor, just deal with the, the water meter. Uh, we're still changing them in house, we changed sixty last, in the last month. Uh, starting Monday, we're gonna have two crews doing that all day long, every day. Uh, we're still waiting on ABR to give us the confirmation on what they can do and what they can't do on transferring these things to put them in the, the system, the new meter in the system. Uh, I was, I'm gonna phone with Shelley when I was there, and she said that they do have the means to help us do it if they have to be done manually. Of course, it's gonna be a fee, she says very minimal, but there will be a fee, whether there is an alternative if ABR can do it, so.
And this is just transferring, I take the old meter out, take the meter number and reading and, and change the whole account over to the new one so you don't lose anything.
And it's gonna be done kind of a manner to assure billing during, during the transfer.
Yeah.
I don't know where this stuff is.
Yeah, so what's the hand from wetland violation?
What hand from wetland violation? Uh, I haven't got that yet, uh, oh, just, uh, all right, uh. Uh, the next one is Chambers Liberty Navigation District. They, uh, increased their raw water rates from eighty-eight cents per thousand to ninety-two, uh, cents, uh, per thousand. Right now, we're paying a little over ten thousand dollars a month for raw water from L N B A and for C L C and D. So our raw, raw water is over twenty thousand dollars a month. So they've increased and the L N, L N B A has already raised their rates to this, so I think C L C and D just copied. Uh, I received, uh, from two thousand and twenty-four, uh, the, the wetlands, the, the hand comer had busted ammonia nitrate, so they, uh, they, they, we were in violation. So I've contacted them and explained to them that we have shut the wetlands down and we built a mechanical plant there, so we shouldn't have any problems, it's just a matter of, uh, I talked to them in Austin, who, who, that we've already corrected the problem by building a new plant. Now, sometime, point in time, we're gonna have to close that old wetlands. So that means that we're gonna have to take the sludge out of it before we can backfill it and just turn it back in, in the regular ground. But at some point, we're gonna have to, uh, Loretta sent me all the information and what all needs to be done to close it out. So we'll have to do that one day, but, uh, this was from, uh, July, uh, twenty twenty-four to August, uh, uh, twenty twenty-four is what this violation was and we've already corrected the problem by building the mechanical plant.
No found?
Shouldn't be, because we, because we've taken care of the problem. And I called and talked to the team leader, but, you know, things move slow.
Gotcha.
So we're, uh, uh, and I put this up there, uh, we've gone, we've gone paperless. Uh, there is a button on there where you can go in, where you pay your account and you can click on the button to go paperless and you will not re, uh, receive the statement anymore. You will just go paperless and.
You'll get an email?
Yeah, you'll get an email and I wanna say Alex told me there's three hundred and something people, so I have already done it, so.
My email's different this month, normally I get an email that says, uh, that I have a bill due. This month, my email actually told me how much my bill was, which was a little different, which was good.
My emails always told me how much it was.
Really? Mine never did until this month.
So, and we've got Facebook up and running and plus our other systems that we have, so. So we're, we're pumping the information out.
The other system that you have, that you're talking about, is that that notification system?
Yes, sir, very many people signed up.
So we're still static on the, on the.
Yes, we, we agreed to, to try it one more year and if they don't sign up, then we'll drop it off and everything will move through Facebook. And we also po- posted on our website. On our website, there's a big blow up there telling you what's going on and then you can go on into your account.
You know how many followers we have on Facebook? I'm just curious.
Okay, um, also, uh, as far as, this is Diane gives me this report. We have three gravity sewer taps, nine grinders, uh, one deflect station to put in, relocate one grinder, have, uh, nine water meters, it's a set, uh, two fire hydrants and so anyway, we're pretty well caught up as far as.
As I was saying, we're still working here in two weeks on getting things put in.
Yeah, so, um, like I said, the majority of these meters that come in, they're in these new subdivisions. The service are in there, instead of the service truck going out there, I've got a meter reader now, I can take it out, pop them around, turn them on and go.
Okay.
No use in building them, uh, two or three months later.
Sounds, sounds fine.
I don't know, we're, we're not behind on the work too bad.
No, we're not behind, that's a good thing.
We had seven line extensions come in yesterday.
Yeah, she told me that.
So, uh, but, so anyway, uh, don't look at some of these too, 'cause there's a lady that says she wants to buy a Chris property and it's seven hundred feet of two inch line. But by the time I get the strike, lightaway permit and the labor and the this and that and other, it's gonna cost you thirty thousand dollars to run seven hundred feet. Uh, and that's including the grinder, but it's gonna cost you thirty thousand dollars. Where in the past, only short extensions, uh, since our labor was paid for, if the, uh, the homeowner would pay for the materials, I would be. And that just get me to the next customer, to the next customer, to the next customer and we're working pretty good. So with Diane adding in all the labor and everything and fee my rates, then, uh, it, it just makes it too astronomical, people can't afford.
Do you know how much of that was labor and how much was material?
It's probably fifty percent labor, yeah, whenever you start looking at it, fifty percent of it's labor, yeah. And, and so in her case, she's gonna pay ten thousand dollars for an irrigation system. So if I can get the cost down to where it's just, it's just as good and she gives it to me and I take care of it from now on. So it, you know, but I, my thing is, I need to try to make it affordable 'cause right now, it's just, there's no way there's, you're gonna be able to spend thirty thousand dollars just for sure.
No, right.
And then she's turning around and then, and then it's alongside water, so we gotta bore the highway, get state permits and so on and so forth. So now she's looking at, you know, forty thousand dollars trying to get service to a piece of property and just can't do it. Okay, that's all I got.
All right, no reason for executive session.
Thank you for pushing on Facebook, we started on January eighth with two hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, good. Very good. All right, no, no reason for executive session today, nope.
Make a motion to adjourn.
There we go, have a motion of second, all in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.